April 25th, meeting two order. And with that, I'd like to ask Chaplain Robin Kramer to come lead us in prayer.
Let's pray. Father God, we just thank you for the rain that you're blessing us with today, Lord. We thank you for the provisions that you've given us. Lord, be with this meeting tonight, Lord. Let there be wisdom, let there be your patience that prevail. Lord, let there be conclusions that are drawn that bring glory to you. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Would you follow me in the prayers? My prayers.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Can I get the roll call, please?
Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Council President Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Bartlet? Councilmember Denzine?
Yeah.
Councilmember Seifert?
We have a quorum, barely. We can move forward. Are there any changes to the printed agenda? Not will move presentation of awards and we'll start with the mayor.
All right, and I'll ask Tammy Steinberg to, she's the Madison County Coordinator for the National Day of Prayer, to meet me up here if you will. That's okay. But this is a proclamation for the National Day of Prayer and just a couple of things that are on here. Whereas, a National Day of Prayer has been part of our national heritage since it was declared by the First Continental Congress in 1775. The United States Congress in 1952 approved as a joint resolution, quote, "That the president shall set aside and proclaim a suitable day each year other than Sunday as a National Day of Prayer," of which with the people of the United States may turn to God in prayer and mediation, meditation of churches, groups, and individuals. And leaders and citizens in our communities, cities, states, and nation are afforded the privilege of prayer with the joy of seeking divine guidance, strength, protection, and comfort. Thus, Paul Finley, Mayor of the City of Madison, do hereby proclaim May 5th, 2022, as National Day of Prayer in the City of Madison. And I'm pleased to give this to you and then let you say a couple of words.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor. And I just encourage all of you to go to the nationaldayofprayer.org website and see different events throughout the city and county where we'll be holding events for people to come and pray for our nation. We need it desperately. Thank you.
Thank you. Not only good business, but personal. So, thank you. I know y'all could choose to work with a number of firms. We have 60 people that are employed here. A number of us choose to live in Madison. We do have offices in 15 cities around the southeast. And what's important is that we work as one firm, and that means that we make sure that our clients get the expertise based on the industry they're in. My partner, Adam Nelson, spends all of his time focused on the public sector, so colleges and universities and municipalities. So, since he devotes 100% of his time to that and is the lead audit partner on the City of Madison, I'm going to turn it over to him for a little bit more of a detailed presentation.
Very good.
Are we ready with the presentation? It's good to go? Okay. Little technical difficulties, I apologize for that. As Ray said, I'm an audit partner. I actually am out of our Fort Walton Beach, Florida, practice, but I do along the Gulf Coast as well as in Alabama. So, I was happy to be asked to join the City of Madison Audit Team this year, and it was a pleasure. Before I get into my presentation, I'd like to thank Megan and Roger and John and their team for really just being an awesome and amazing group of people to work with. So, the City of Madison has great people that I've been so privileged to interact with during this year's audit. We'll go ahead and get into the presentation now. Here's a little agenda, nothing really in detail. It's going to hit the high levels of what's in that very large, thick financial report that's prepared for y'all to read, you know, if you're bored one night or rained out baseball game or whatever the case may be. So, moving on to the first part, your opinion is, the opinion on the financial statements is an unmodified or a clean audit opinion? And that's the highest level of assurance that an auditor can give an organization or municipality. So, that's obviously something you want to achieve. You also have something in your financial statements that are called supplemental information. Those items are not actually audited by the auditors, but they are reconciled with the information that we do audit. So, we do give some level of limited assurance that those were properly prepared, and they were. Also, because you're a municipality, you report under governmental auditing standards, which means we have to issue a separate report that says we've looked at your internal controls and we have not identified any internal control matters, nor have we identified any material noncompliance with laws and regulations. Another area that we're required is our auditing senators to go over. If I can get the slide to move.
Turn it up. Good point.
Turn it up. See how that works.
Tilt your head to the left. There you go. See? You gotta go the other direction.
There we go. There we go.
All right. Had your head tilted the wrong direction.
Some of the information that we're required to disclose, some qualitative aspects of your accounting practices for the year. There's been no changes in your accounting policies this year. There was also no new accounting policies or procedures adopted because of GASB standards. Part of the audit, we look at your significant audit, your significant transactions. We did not identify any that were not properly recorded. We did also not identify any unusual transactions. Lastly, we'd like to go over the, if there were any alternative accounting policies discussed with management, and there were none. There were also no transactions identified that lacked authoritative guidance on how they should be treated. In your financial statements, you have two major estimates or judgments in there, mainly it's an estimate in my opinion, and that is relating to your share of the RSA or the retirement system of Alabama, as well as your estimate of how much your other post-employment benefits is going to cost the city over time. Both of those are an actuarial determined number, and they can fluctuate year to year depending upon the different assumptions that are made by the actuaries. So, our job as your auditors, we simply go in, look at the assumptions they use, compare it to the other practices and other assumptions we see elsewhere. We also make sure they're qualified, and obviously if it's SRA or RSA and the one in Florida, which is FRS, those are qualified individuals that are doing those projections for you. So, I do invite you to read those footnotes related to those in your financial statements. I want to say it's close to 10 pages of your financial statements are dedicated to just those assumptions and understanding that information. When you read it and understand it, you can give me a call. I'm still struggling to understand it myself. There were no difficulties encountered during the audit. There were no material audit adjustments that had to be made. There were no disagreements with management, and there's really no other findings or issues that were required to, need to be reported to management or to governance, all of which are very good. Some key items of note, I want to start out by saying the financial situation of the city is very, very strong. The numbers are healthy and it's showing it is above average compared to other cities of your size. Your assets exceeds your liabilities by $100.7 million. That's made up of an unrestricted net position deficit of $93.8 million. You have restricted net position of $51 million, and you have an investment in capital assets of $140 million. $140, excuse me. This year, your net position increased $24.3 million. That means basically the city's net income. You had an increase in operating grants and contributions. You saw an increase in charges for services as well as other taxes. Your revenue at the fund level, which that means more of a cash basis if you think of it, that increased $8.7 million. Of that, the majority of that is your tax, your property taxes increased $3.1 million, as well as your sales tax increased approximately $4.5 million. Your expenditures this year also decreased approximately $14 million, and that's mainly because you had less capital projects than you did in the prior years. Keeping on with looking at this from the more of the cash basis or the modified accrual basis, your combined fund balance, which is all your governmental funds together, you had $78.8 million, which was an increase of $8.7 million over last year. Your balance of $78 million is comprised this year of $300,000 that's a non-spendable, which means you've already spent it for prepaid items. You had $28.3 million, which is restricted for future capital projects, and you have $27 million that is unassigned.
$2.7. $2.7, not 27.
Twenty. He skipped too long.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay.
See, I was seeing that y'all were paying.
I guess. It's real money here.
The unassigned fund balance, as I said, is $27 million. That's an increase of $7.6 million over last year. And the reason I want to highlight the unassigned fund balance is because that is the funds that are available for the city to use at its discretion. So, it's not legally restricted or committed by the council. This is approximately 34% of your overall fund balance, as well as it accounts for 99% of your total general fund expenditures this year. So, essentially what that is telling you is that you have almost a full year's worth of expenditures of unassigned dollars that you could use. Should something happen or come arise that needs immediate funding, you have some set aside, ready to go. With that, I know I didn't take a lot of time, but I'll open it up to any questions, comments, or concerns.
I would just say, if we put it in layman's terms, are we financially healthy as a city?
Yes.
Oh, we need to hear. We have so many people. That all the time, oh, the sky's falling, the sky's falling. So, it's just good to hear in simple terms, yes, we're financially.
We are a very financially healthy and sound municipality.
Correct. Very good.
Great.
And I think everybody here echoes what you said. We appreciate Roger and the team there that has kept us going that direction. Yes.
Surprise, it's me. My name is Angela Gary. I've lived here forever. At least I have my address memorized. I would like to speak to you all tonight. Can y'all hear me good? Because there are only 10 people here. I signed up to speak about Hughes Road, but we know that it's a mess, and it's going to be a mess for a while. So, we all agree to that, and we'll move on because Hughes Road's a mess, right? I've asked four different people, four different about it, and I've been told four different things. So, it's a mess. We're going to live with it because we're from Madison, and that's what we do. We carry on, and we're going to keep going. I've always referred to Madison, probably like Ralph White, as my hometown. Mayor Finley has asked me in the past, could I refer to it as our hometown? I tried that for a while, but Madison is not like it's always, like the Madison I grew up in. And I know that when I came to Madison, there was probably 500 people, and now there is
More.
10,000. A few more, yeah. There might be that many that live on my street now. Mayor Finley has an open door policy, and he's great to keep that. Ask me. I'm in there every two weeks.
You utilize it.
Yeah, I'm probably number one. I used to be teasingly say, I'm Mayor Finley, safe citizen. I don't say that anymore because I got a feeling that's not true. Maybe I wanted the welcome out, but you know what? I'm not giving up. I'll be there tomorrow, 2:00. I guess you'll be not asleep, you're so giddy. But I would like to say this. In Madison, there is no room for rudeness or bad manners. Being polite costs nothing. And this is really weird because I see Greg Shaw real blurry, and I look down and I see nothing, so that's just driving me crazy. But, we don't have to be rude or use bad manners to get a point across. You look at the minutes of a meeting, and a lot of times, there will say, there'll be something, and you can ask every, it'll say, like, Ms. Robleski has no comment, no comment, no comment, but every time, Ms. Denzine, Ms. Denzine, she's got a comment. And sometimes she goes a little long, and you know, I personally, I sent her an email and said, what in the world, woman? How can you talk about that much? But I'm going to tell you this. Ms. Denzine, if I was living her life right now, I might talk longer than she does because she has a hard row ahead of her. We all have the right to free speech. We also all have the freedom to stay silent when you have an ignorant opinion or a cruel thought. The solution to bad speech isn't more speech, it's better speech. Adam Grant said that. I don't know who Adam Grant is, but I think as Madisonians, we can definitely do better. And let's try, y'all. Let's just try to be kind, and I'll try that maybe tomorrow, mayor.
Rock on.
I'm not making promises, but three minutes is not very long, and so I'll be back in two weeks.
Thank you, Ms. Angela.
Thank you, Ms. Angela. Ms. Bibi?
I just need to answer to some questions to make a point. I noticed on the agenda, we've got Resolution 128R, which is 8D under legal, about an interchange. Is that, was Breland responsible for that particular interchange?
It's the interchange at Town Madison, yes.
He was, okay. You know, I would like to know how much this city has had to pay to bail him out on many things. I know the light down there, we had to do, and I know parking we had to do. I would like to know how much money we've spent on things that he was supposed to do. Now, another thing is, I was looking so forward to these three big projects that the governor is going to do up here. And then, read the fine print and find out, very, very, very little is happening in Madison. We've already put in $3 million. I'd like to keep up with that when they finally, when ADM, such as they are, decide to bail out how much each city is going to have to pay, but see, they're going to stop at Nance Road coming this way. And I always heard that it was going to go to County Line Road, but they're going to stop and not help Madison at all. The cars are piled up out there every day, especially if it's pretty, from County Line to Providence, probably, or at least to, on down that way, outside the city of Madison. But, I'm real disappointed in the three things. I know 565 probably is going to help us a little bit, but that's the state's problem. That's not our problem. I'd like to know when they bail out what we owe, how much it's for and what it's for. And also, how much Breland, how much we bailed him out.
Is there anyone else? If not, we'll close public comments and move into consent agenda and finance committee report.
Finance committee met last week, and we went through the consent agenda. Everything was in order. We also went through the audit, which naturally, we got a clean audit, which is always good. So, no news is good news. One thing that we did get out of it is, it looks like our emergency fund is covering for a whole year if something were to happen. It also covers if there's some kind of natural disaster. So, with all that, I'd like to move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Bartlet? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Motion passes. Next presentation of reports, and we'll start with the mayor.
All right, and I'll start by asking council for approval of Resolution Number 2022-124-R, authorizing a preliminary engineering right-of-way acquisition, utility, and construction agreement with Aldat, the City of Huntsville, the City of Madison, and the Madison County Commission for three road projects on a 60-40 split with the city to be, with the city share to be determined.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion?
All right, and to give a little bit of discussion and a little bit of feedback, what we had done as a collective community, and that's not just Mayor Battle, Chairman Strong and I, but it's also our local, excuse me, our state house and senate representatives, is came together and defined what are the top seven projects that are state and/or federally needed in Madison County. We came up with seven different projects, of which we collectively went down a couple of different times to the governor's office to request that they support funding, all of it, but worst case, have some sort of split that we as a community would only have to pay a certain percentage. The governor came back through her team about three or four weeks ago and said, what we'd like to do is split this up and take three projects to start with, and you know the three projects that have been named, and start there, and then look to possibly down the road, add more to that. So, this agreement allows us to first accept that placeholder of where that money is, that she's willing to put into it from a state level, where we now can make sure that that's in place, and then we will work together as a unified three to figure out whose percentage is what. Bibi makes a great point on Highway 72. Unfortunately, they have to start at the Providence Bridges, which the six-laning ends and the four-laning starts. They have no idea until they bid those bridges, how much the bridges are going to cost. So, they have to engineer all of it. They have to engineer all of it, bid it, and then they'll get as far west as they possibly can, they say Nance, but if they can go farther, they will, on that first phase of money. The other process is 565's a perfect example of going six-lane and there's a four-lane stretch between Waltrana and County Line that needs to be six-laned, and then the third project. So, we haven't agreed to any type of percentage. We know we've put in the money for Highway 72. We'll work with Mayor Battle, Chairman Strong to come up with what our percentage would be in the city of Madison, if any, which there will be something, and then bring it back to you guys for a vote. But this is how you prioritize getting that amount of money, $67 million, to go towards community projects. And the one thing that's always looked upon, and I say not, it's not forgotten, it's just a reality, while we live in Madison, we have to get to the jobs. And so, some of these roads, while not in Madison proper, are the roads that we, our citizens use to get where they need to go. So, it's a great start. We still have to come up with the percentages, but this at least gets the placeholder in place and secures that money that the governor's already said that she would give us.
Any other discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Bartlet? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you, guys. Secondly, I have a check here that I'll give to Roger in the morning, but council, if you would please, we need to accept. It's from North Alabama Gas. It's for their franchise fee piece that they have. It's in the tune of $535,746.92. And I'd just like council to, if you guys will approve that, then we'll bring it on in and give it to Roger to add into that money that was already in the bank.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Bartlet? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Motion passes.
All right, and that is from the North Alabama Gas. Their general manager is Tony Burns. He came with their local representative, David McCarley. And one of the things they passed along is we have two board members that are former council folks that are on that board, Tommy Overcash and Cynthia McCollum, and he raved about what they're doing for the city, keeping us in their mind, and they've done a great job. Next thing I want to talk about, May 2nd, we're excited to finally have a city engineer in place. Michelle's been, it's a yeoman's job, there's nobody happier. She's cheerleading every morning on that. His name is Michael Johnson. He is this current city engineer for Warner Robbins in Georgia and will be coming here and starting on May 2nd and we're excited about that. Again, thank you to HR. This has not been an easy job to fill and it's been one that we've had to go through a couple of iterations and they've stayed with it to continue to find folks, reaching out, not just waiting for folks to hopefully look at a job opportunity, but actually sending proactively things out. Michael coming will be one more asset that we have to work on all kinds of projects, including Hughes Road. Also, I want to give an update on governance transition. We're in the process of setting up a couple of different meetings. One is Megan and I will be having, setting up a meeting with the probate judge to understand if the community wanted to move forward, what would it look like as far as, right now, we talked about give or take 900 signatures that would need to be presented to the probate judge, they would move forward with those types of things. What is that? Which leads to the second part, is I'm working with folks on the Governance Transition Committee, where we're gonna have a couple, maybe two or three, community meetings and we're looking to have those probably summer into early fall, as early as we can to make sure that we share with the community what the Governance Transition Committee looked into, what they recommended, the options that the community has, and be ready to move forward with that. So, just wanted to give a quick update on that. And then lastly, I thought most folks have probably heard, but our multi-use facility now will include goalposts for an event that's coming October 15th to the Madison, to the Trash Panda Stadium, to Toyota Field, and it is a football game between the University of North Alabama and Jacksonville State. It will be only the second football game ever played under NCAA sanctions that basically uses one end zone, is a primary end zone, and they'll constantly flip every time there's a punt or a kickoff or something, where they'll just keep going back towards one end zone. Everybody's agreed to it, everybody's really excited about it. They're expecting about 10,000 people at that game. So, we'll be working with chief and chief and everybody else around there to make sure that it's there and safe. But one thing about it, and I think it's a critical piece that was made today, University of North Alabama said that their second largest feeder county is Madison County. You tie that together with looking to get more folks into their school through their programs, but then it directly correlates back to filling these jobs that are in this area. So, it's kind of a win-win-win for everyone, but it's another non-baseball event led by the ballcorps Trash Panda team that will be done at the stadium and we're all really excited about it. So, with that said, that's all I have.
Very good. District number one.
Yes, sir. The first item I have for your consideration and approval is from HR and it's authorizing changes to job classification plans, and this is Resolution 2022-129R. And just very briefly, this creates two new positions, a principal planner and senior HRIS system analyst, and then also seven great changes in our harder-to-fill areas of food service, lifeguards, the ceramics lady at the senior center, our rec aides. We're looking at requesting this approval to be more competitive with area communities and this will help us attract and retain quality individuals. Director Towery is here if council has any question. HR Committee met last week, unanimously approved it, and with that, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to say thank you so much for joining us. It is wonderful that we can give this, this, after hearing Angela, I'm a little bit, girl. All right, it is wonderful that we can give this great increase to these people. I have been working down at the Senior Center just to fill in and I am so glad that we can now offer more than $8 an hour to bring in people that really want to work and serve down there. So, I just absolutely am thrilled to see that this is being put forward. So, thank you very, very much.
Very good. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Bartlet? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Motion passes.
Thank you all. I attended the McDab meeting and with Mayor Finley and Councilmember Spears and Bartlet, the state of Alabama, addressed by Governor Ivey. We are in excellent position in our state. We're coming through COVID and as we saw today with the financial presentation, Madison is also in a great position. Also attended the Friends of the Library event, one to, library meeting, wanted to mention two events. Coming up this Thursday is the Mad Movie-a-thon-a-rama. They are showing the classic, The Monster of Paradis Blancus from 1959. If you haven't seen it on the big screen, you should. And then the second program the library has going on is 52 Weeks of Sun, which is a collection of stories read on a local public broadcasting station that features 42 local authors and authors from around the area, and that event will be on April 30th. So, mark your calendars for that and that's all I have.
Very good. District number three.
I just got one quick thing. Again, I'm grateful that we're getting non-baseball events. That's a huge win for the city and helps us, of course, pay for the stadium. One thing I did want to mention, we did have one Saturday night, which I got several complaints about, you know, being loud and noisy and I understand because it covered all of District Three. I live in the very northwest corner of the district and I could hear it at my house. So, we're working on that to see what we can do about it. It's typically when we have, you know, events such as concerts and, you know, if there's, if the air's clear and depending on how far the base will go as opposed to treble, so we're working it and I don't have a solution yet, but I know we all got complaints about the same thing. That's all I have.
Very good. District number six.
Well, where did Angela go? I really do appreciate her comments. They were very, very kind. She did write me last night. She sent me an email. She goes, why do you go on and on? Well, what I really am doing is being accountable to the citizens. I'm just reporting on the things that I've done during the previous two weeks. I'm reporting on things that, I mean, I'm liaison for Board of Education, the Beautification Board, Madison Street Festival. There's so many things, so I just feel responsible in reporting back. But I did tell her I will try to edit my comments a little bit so I don't go on so much. But to me, I'm excited about this city and I just report on what the city is doing. But we, that was very sweet of her, what she said. I only have a couple of things actually to report on. One is the Madison Police Citizen Advisory Committee. It meets tomorrow in this room at 6:30. The topic is the school safety and operations update with the SROs. Sean, I'll be there. I'll be looking forward to that. Also, we had the Easter egg extravaganza and unfortunately, it rained again and so we couldn't go out in the fields. But we had a wonderful time with the kids just getting out of the car and we were just filling their baskets full of eggs and just, the Easter bunny was there and it was just a delightful, it was a delightful thing. So, that's just one of those things that make this place so special, not absent the sense of family, the things that we can do that just bring people together for happy times. That was a really good event. But I did want to thank people that were involved with that. It was the Madison Parks and Rec staff, McDab, they were involved, the Rocket City Martial Arts, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, St. James' Grand Lodge of Alabama, and the Women's Faith Grand Chapter of Alabama. If anybody has worked with those organizations, they are all wonderful. We had such a good time. It was such a happy atmosphere with everybody working together. And so, those are, those are just the things that I love so much and that I do talk about. Angela did reference what was going on in my life. I was a transparent back in October when my husband was diagnosed with stage IV colon cancer. And then I was open when the scan came back and showed that he was in remission and that all the tumors were gone and we just had to continue through chemo and then they would do another PET scan and they did a colonoscopy and everything else. Well, the last PET scan was done and the news came last Tuesday that the cancer's back. It's in two places, plus still in his colon. So, we're not gonna have, excuse me. It's not gonna be the easy route that we were hoping for, but I have to tell you how loving and how supportive everybody in the city has been in this last week and the kind comments and the texts and the phone calls. This is a wonderful city to live in, people. It really is. There is so much good and kind-hearted people and I want to thank everyone for their support. Excuse me. Well, I could do these things. So, that's all my comments are.
We're there for you, you and Dave.
Thank you.
We have no board and committee appointments. We're moving to public hearings. We have one.
I'm the substitute revenue director for this evening and I'm presenting Resolution Number 2022-119R, and this is to approve a on-or-off premise beer and wine license for DX LLC, which is the company that owns the I Love Sushi Express in Town Madison. This restaurant has already been open and operating for a while, so all of their building and co-compliance inspections checked out and there are no contingencies with this proposal.
I'd like to open the public hearing. Does anyone like to address council and mayor? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Bartlet? Councilmember Denzine?
It was an aye.
You said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wish I'd heard.
Councilmember Seaford?
Thank you.
And motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, department reports and we'll start with engineering.
I have one item for your consideration tonight. It's Resolution Number 2022-125R. It's authorizing a sales order and maintenance agreement with the Liosi Group for the purchase of a wide-format printer in the amount of $14,149.50 with a $28 a month maintenance and supply fee.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Bartlet? Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seaford?
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is fire.
Here comes the best deal of the night.
I've asked John Howell, the CEO with Hempsey, to step up with me. Really wanted to talk just for a second about the great relationship and partnership that we continue. We've had it for years and years between Hempsey and Madison Fire. So, just as a quick summary, any EMS calls, any medical or trauma calls that occur in the city, we get, our paramedics respond from the fire department and Hempsey's usually right there with us or a few minutes behind us and they provide the transport and continue the advanced life care to the hospital. So, last year, you, in continuation of that partnership, last year, you agreed to an MOU where anytime that's necessary, our paramedics can just jump in the back and go to the hospital and continue that care. And this is the next step, which is for Resolution Number 2022-104-R, authorizing an ambulance lease agreement with Hempsey in the amount of $1 for one year to be paid from our department budget that we would lease an ambulance from them. So, I brought John if you had any questions about that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a couple of seconds. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to, like to thank Hempsey first of all for that agreement and I did challenge chief about this. We had this overview in finance. I've challenged him to go out and get us a fire truck the same way. He said it's gonna be a little bit more difficult, but the challenge is there. And I do get to drive, by the way. Did they say that? Okay, maybe I don't.
We'll just put him in the back.
Maybe I don't get to drive, I get to ride.
Which is a really proactive agreement on both parts. I think it helps both of us and very appreciative of that. And when you talk about the insurance, that was the one piece that we had that Finance Committee was able to listen to and very supportive of. And so, I think we've got a great agreement that gives us a lot of flexibility.
Yeah, I think it's just wonderful, another way to serve the people quickly. Thank you.
Good. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember, Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet? Councilmember Seaford?
Motion passes.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Next is planning.
Just one item for you this evening and it's just a first reading and this is proposed ordinance 2022-114, and this is to vacate a landscape easement at the corner of Waterston Way and County Line Road. You can see it's highlighted in blue. We'll be back at your next meeting asking for approval of this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Megan.
Favorite person. This time.
So thankful. All right, I have Resolution Number 2022-120AR for your consideration tonight. This authorizes a design and bidding services agreement with AECom Technical Services for evaluating construction costs for Phase Two of the Town Madison Interchange, and the amount requested for approval is $241,000. That does not include construction phase services. And if council decides to move forward with this project, then we'll come back and ask for an amendment to this agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion?
I can probably add a little bit to that and think we should and I think in this case. So, a couple of different things. When it comes to Town Madison, it's always, it's no secret that the Cooperative District, in essence, Lewis Breland, has paid all of the money upfront for all of the infrastructure,[1776.37] up to the tune of about $32 million. Um, there's also about $5 million of interest that's sitting in there right now. What the next phase is, because that does not take care of what we call the flyovers, the rest of the interchange, the next step would be to better understand if the previous cost that they had given us when it had been engineered and brought forth to bid, which was at $28 million, that happened in 2018, is that still a good number? Obviously, a lot of things have changed. Inflation has brought some prices up, but we do know that in some instances, market conditions might have brought prices down. When we bid that in 2018, pretty much all the bridge work was being used to complete the Greenbrier Parkway and a lot of the stuff that needed to be done over there, all the way down into Brown's Ferry. So with that said, the city, in understanding revenue sources, understands what's in Town Madison, what's already been brought out of the ground, both from a sales tax and a property tax. It's no secret that on the planning commission, a few weeks ago, there is, um, businesses up in Cliff Farm that were looked upon to be possibly brought into the city of Madison.